And with that, we're gonna go ahead and get the city council meeting in order. And we'll begin with the invocation, the pledge allegiance. And I'll have our city clerk announce those two individuals.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Bishop Edison Perez of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. And the pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilmember Lopez.
Feel free to come right to the podium.
Yes. Nuestro amoroso padre celestial, en esta tarde te damos gracias por esta oportunidad que nos das a todos de estar en este sitio en consejo y poder determinar las mejores decisiones para nuestra ciudad. Te damos gracias por tu hijo Jesucristo. Y en esta ocasión te queremos pedir tu espíritu para que nos pueda guiar a cada uno de nosotros y podamos ser bendecidos para que podamos tener buenos frutos para nuestro prójimo y podamos tener las mejores decisiones para nuestros hijos, nuestros nietos y nuestras futuras generaciones. Estas cosas las dejamos en nombre de tu hijo Jesucristo. Amén.
Amen. Muchas gracias señor, Bishop.
Before we recite the pledge, let us do so in remembrance on this 80-year anniversary of D-Day. And let us remember those who sacrificed their lives for the freedom it represents. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Can you please do a roll call, city clerk?
I would like to state for the record that Councilmember Martinez has been excused and will not be in attendance at tonight's meeting. Councilmember Lopez?
Here.
Councilmember Rue?
Present.
Tim Johnson?
I'm here.
Dutre?
Present as well.
Thank you.
So I believe under presentations, we have Supervisor Hagman's feel representative that wants to do a presentation or announcements. Under presentations. Ruby Long?
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, Ruby, how you doing?
I'm good. Good afternoon. It was a pleasure being there on Saturday at the county fair. We really enjoyed it.
Thank you.
And I just do have two announcements. The first one is that we're gonna be hosting our open house this Wednesday, June 5th. It's gonna be at our district office in Chino Hills, and it's from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. We'll have food and we'll have different county departments there. And you'll be able to raffle off some tickets for some prizes. And once again, it's this Wednesday, the 5th, from 5:00 to 7:00. You can go onto our website and you can pre-register if you'd like. And then on June 15th, on a Saturday, we'll be hosting our shredding event. And this time, it's gonna be in the city of Chino at the Chino City Hall, and it's from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Once again, it's three standard boxes per car, and it is a free event. So if you have anything you need shredded, we hope to see you there. And those are the two that I have. So thank you so much for letting me announce.
Thank you very much, Ruby.
Thank you. Bye.
Okay, we will now go on to public comments. This is an opportunity for members of the public to wish to address the city council. Obviously, it can only address issues around the agenda, so if you have any comments on agenda item, on the agenda, or nothing on the agenda, this is a great opportunity to do it. You have five minutes. And I'll have the city clerk please introduce any speakers we have today.
I just have one card from Xavier Mendez.
Mr. Mendez, come on up. I just say, come on down. Come on down from Webb.
All right, well, first off, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Potem, city council, city staff, city manager, and residents and other staff here at the city. First off, just again, Saturday at the country fair jamboree was a wonderful time. I had a booth out there, you know, just talking to people about Montclair and, you know, what a wonderful city this is. I had lots of, saw lots of police officers there and a lot of cadets, which was nice to see all these little explorers. You know, I think they're in high school, but that was, that was nice to see. A lot of firemen were there. You know, obviously, public workers that are working. I gave away a bicycle. I had Ed draw the winning ticket. Ended up being a city yard guy. And so I think he was very happy to win that bike. But other than that, that was it. Just wanted to say hi and say it was good to see everybody there that was there. And, oh, I did have one question from Arsha. And that was, so it was the 10th Annual Country Fair Jamboree, but why do we not count the Family Fun Festival? Because I feel like it's really like the 20-something, you know, event, but I don't know if you can answer that. It's not on the agenda.
We were just going by the, the name. So it's the 10th Annual Country Fair Jamboree.
Well, how long have we been doing it?
Oh, gosh. We started with, that I recall, back when we had chili cook-offs. That were back in the 80s, and then we did Family Fun Festivals after that. And so the last 10 years have been Country Fair Jamboree.
Okay.
788 that we have.
And I just remember doing the skateboard contest there, you know, every, starting, and I think 2005 or '06 is when we started that. But, yeah, it was nice. It was good to have everybody there. Didn't seem as crowded this time as normally. Lots of vendors were there. I think there were a lot of booths sold. But I think maybe next time, a little bit more advertising, maybe like at Stater Brothers or some, like the donut shops or somewhere. I just felt like, you know, only place I saw it advertised was on Facebook, and that was it. So, and this beautiful sign board we have out here. But, yeah, maybe next time we'll get it out a little bit more. But, yeah, it was a wonderful event, so thank you guys very much, and have a good night.
Great. Thank you very much. All right, I think that's it for speakers. And we'll move on to our next item, which is public hearing. We have one, one item on the agenda for public hearing. And I'm gonna give it to staffs. And this is regarding amending zoning code and repealing, replacing Chapter 11.23 regarding accessory dwelling units. All right, Ed, is that you, or is that gonna be Mr. Diaz?
It'll be me tonight.
Mr. Diaz?
Evening, Mayor Dutre and members of the city council. It's good to be here tonight with another code amendment to update our municipal code and zoning code in particular. What I wanted to do before we get started is to point you to the first page of the city council agenda staff report. It's page four of your document that's in front of you. In the section that starts off with background, there's a couple of bullets below there. And the first, the second one says size of ADUs. That first secondary bullet, I wanted to clarify that we wanted to use the word maximum size requirements, not minimum size, so that that sentence would read the maximum size requirements a local agency can impose for ADUs is 850 square feet for a one-bedroom or 1,000 square feet for two or more bedrooms. In addition, the local agencies cannot impose restrictions that would prohibit the construction of an 800-square-foot ADU at all. So that, by, by action of the city, we couldn't do that. So just want to make sure that everybody knows that clarification, because that point, which I wanted to put in my presentation today, I missed, so that's clarified now. But like we did with the SB 9 ordinance, I thought it'd be easier to go through a PowerPoint presentation that highlights the changes that are contemplated with the ordinance before you tonight. So ordinance number 24106. Updates the Montclair Municipal Code so that it's consistent with state legislation regarding ADUs or accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units that are constructed within the city. That's the intent behind this ordinance. The proposed ordinance would comply and implement the provisions of Government Code Sections 6585-2.2 and 6585. There should be a 2 there before the .22 that were recently amended by SB 897. What's proposed for you, for you tonight with this ordinance is to amend Chapter 11 of the Montclair Municipal Code specifically by repealing the existing text that's in Chapter 11.23 in its entirety, and then replacing it with what's in the text that's in Exhibit A of your ordinance. And the text begins on page nine through 17 of your agenda packet that's with you, that you have tonight. The notable changes that, in addition to the sizes I just mentioned to you earlier, this first bullet or square would allow for an increase in the height for some of the ADUs that are constructed in our city. More specifically, the increased maximum height limit for ADUs that are within a half a mile of a major transit stop or high-quality transit corridors went from 16 feet to 18 feet. And it also, the ordinance also allows for the increase of a height limit up to 25 feet for attached ADUs that are, and that's in one sense, that are attached to the existing primary dwelling on the site. And so long as it's not an ADU that's taller than two stories. So that's a, a change. Most of our ADUs are in the lower, up to 15-foot-high range to the peaks of, of most of their designs. The ADUs that are built in our community still are subject to the local development standards of, that are in our zoning code and included in parts of this particular ordinance. The exception is that for the rear yard and the side yards, four feet is still the standard that will continue from the existing, what we have existing now, and it will continue to apply on any of the ADUs that are constructed in our city. The third bullet on this particular page clarifies that the installation of fire sprinklers in an ADU was not required if the fire sprinklers are not required in the primary dwelling unit that existed on the site already. And it would further clarify that the construction of an ADU by itself does not trigger the requirement that the fire sprinklers need to be installed in the primary dwelling. So if you don't have fire extinguishers now, you're not required to put them in because you're building an ADU. And just building an ADU doesn't require that you have to do the primary dwelling now either. So it works kind of both ways, and it's a clarification that was needed. Notable changes two. The bill specifies that parking requirements may not be required for ADUs in the following instances. But before I go any further, I want to make sure that everybody understands that the code that's before you today also requires that you have one space provided for each dwelling unit that's constructed on a site. That's a space. That's not a covered space. It's not a carport or a garage, enclosed garage, but it's some, someplace on the property that you need to provide for parking. And it can come in the form of a tandem arrangement, so you have one in front of the other. But that's the general requirement. But there's exceptions, and the exceptions are listed on this page, that if on-street parking permits are required but not offered to the occupancy ADU, then there's an exception from that requirement. If there's a car share located within a block of an ADU, there's an exception for that. And if your ADUs within a half-mile walking distance of public transit or an architecturally historically significant district, then there's an exception for that as well. To date, everybody that I know that has come through an ADU requesting, requested in our city, everybody wants to have a parking space on their site, and they've managed to be able to provide it. So it's worked out okay so far. Notable change is number three. It's pretty straightforward. This, the ordinance prohibits the local agency from requiring modifications to an existing multifamily dwelling to satisfy the requirements that we just talked about. It also prohibits local agencies from promoting, from imposing any parking standards on an ADU that is included in an application to create a new single-family or multifamily dwelling unit on the same lot. So you might require, recall, a few years back on Palo Verde, we had vacant lots that were developed with three units on each one, a J-ADU, a main primary unit, and a detached ADU. We wouldn't be able to require parking for the ADUs. The third bullet here is the approvals of ADUs and J-ADUs are to be based solely on the standards that are within the proposed ordinance. And we're not to look to other, with respect to local, let me start again. The approval of the ADUs and J-ADUs is to be based solely on default statutory standards without local regulations governing site setback, landscape, and architecture review, or perceived threats to the character of the existing neighborhoods, any negative impacts to property values, personal privacy, or fire safety. So we're strictly limited to doing, observing objective standards, which I'll get to in a couple of slides forward from here. Notable changes on page four specifies that enclosed uses within a proposed or existing single-family residence, such as an attached garage, they're considered part of the primary single-family residence. So if you had a garage, it's attached to your primary unit, that conversion of that garage would be a junior accessory dwelling unit. The, the next bullet prohibits the local agency from denying a permit for an ADU because there are some other non-conforming zoning conditions, building code violations, or unpermitted structures that are on the site that, at that point, don't present a threat to public health and safety. And we're prohibited, as a city, from denying a permit for an unpermitted ADU that was constructed before January 1st, 2018, due to a violation of building standards, unless the local agency, which is us, a building division, makes a finding that correcting the violation is necessary to protect health and safety of the public or occupants of that structure. Oftentimes, from time to time, we run into properties that want to do improvements, but there's some other zoning code violations. And what this would mean in our, those cases is that those would have to be handled separately as a different matter, but not tied to any kind of decision on the ADU approval process for that particular site. On page five here, the, or it's actually page seven, but it's notable changes five. The city is required to approve or deny an application for an ADU or J-ADU within 60 days of receiving this application, or receiving an application. Happy to say that, for the most part, 98% of all the ones we've had have been easily done within those 60 days in our community so far. So we're doing really good at that. The next bullet requires the city to justify with a full set of detailed comments describing the deficiencies in the application, and where we're expected to explain how to remedy them, which is one of the requirements, usually pretty easy to do with clarification. Most people are receptive to those changes. The third item is that the proposed ordinance amends the city's local regulatory scheme for construction of ADUs and J-ADUs to comply with the recently amended sections of the code that I mentioned earlier at the beginning, on the first slide that we have. If we don't change the ordinance to be consistent with the state's legislations, then the state considers our, any ordinance we have to be null and void anyway. And we would have to, anybody would have to, would be subject to default state standards provided in those particular sections that we are referring to today. So that's pretty much, pretty clear that we have no, have, we have to do this. So what continues to be included. Local agencies may only impose objective zoning standards and objective design standards on qualifying ADU and J-ADU project applications. But any of these standards cannot have the practical effect of precluding construction of, should be one unit of at least 800 square feet on the property. And so that's important to know that, you know, we, we don't have a whole lot of subjective required situations before us. Other communities in old, in other days would have to take these to get through a conditional use permit process, and there'd be a lot of design haggling back and forth on designs of, of projects. But that's no longer the case, and hasn't been the case for a number of years now. Some of the objective standards that city are included in the, in the proposed ordinance include the ADU, matching the architectural style of the existing primary dwelling. And that would include roof pitches, exterior building materials, colors, and other finishes. Usually pretty easy to do. Most people want to do that anyway, and don't have, we don't really have any issues with that. Each unit is supposed to have a separate exterior entry, apart from that of the primary dwelling unit. Walls and window placements are required to maximize privacy wherever that can be done in a practical manner. The ordinance would prohibit rooftop decks from being constructed. And any required lighting, or requires exterior lights to be shielded and directed downward to cause less impacts to adjacent properties. Then last but not least is landscaping requirements to complete the project that is being approved. Okay, an ADU at the end, on, I think this is on page, on page nine, I believe, of the, the report. These are new provisions that are in the code, or in the proposal. This clarifies that an ADU or J-ADU can be rented, but it can't be for a term that's shorter than 30 days. So, and so that precludes people from using these, I guess, for short-term rentals. But it, so 30 days is the minimum requirement for any kind of rental of either one of these units. And further, the ADU or J-ADU cannot be sold or otherwise conveyed separately. So they can't be sold off. They need to be part of the, the ownership of that particular property. Owner occupancy is, is not required for the ADU created on or after January 20th, 2020. However, the owner occupancy requirement still applies for all J-ADUs. And those are units that are carved out of the main primary residence. And there are now certain income reporting requirements that apply to ADUs and J-ADUs that are rented. And this is to facilitate the city's obligation to identify adequate sites for housing in accordance with Government Code Sections that are listed in that document before, before you're there. And so that's something we would, we'll need to keep, continue doing. So that's basically the, the major changes of the proposed ordinance that are before you tonight. We can talk more about those when we, anything you want to talk about after that. I have the Todd Leishman from BB&amp;K, who helped us craft this particular ordinance before you today. And then Sylvia, senior planner Sylvia Gutierrez is also here. She also worked on this proposal that's before you tonight. So with that, staff would recommend that the city council take the following actions.
Okay.
We'd find that the proposed statutory exempt from the California CEQA, and that we ask that you consider adopting code amendment 2421 under ordinance 24106 to replace, repeal and replace Chapter 1123 of the Montclair Municipal Code related to ADUs and J-ADUs in the community.
Okay, great. I appreciate that very much. I think we have Mayor Potem, Denise Johnson, who's gonna lead off, and it's all yours.
I just have a question for Mr. Diaz, and I'm referring to notable changes number-
Oh, before, I'm sorry, before you go, Denise, I need, I really need to open up the public hearing and see if we have members to speak. Apologize. Any members of the public want to speak on the side? This is an opportunity to speak on the side at this time. Do you have any speakers? No? No speakers, then we'll close the public hearing and bring the matter back to the city council. Now you can speak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So my question is for Mr. Diaz about notable changes number two on page four. So when it comes to providing parking spaces, do I understand correctly that the property owner gets to decide? So I'm thinking if, you know, great-grandma's gonna move into this ADU, but she can't walk to the bus stop, we can still put, they still have the option to put parking for grandma, yes?
Yes. Generally, we're required to have one space for every onsite for every ADU.
But there's exceptions.
These exceptions would apply, and to date, no one's ever taken advantage of any of them because they all really want to park on their site and not, because they still have vehicles and they still need to park them somewhere. But this would require at least one space for grandma, whether she has a car or not.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much for that clarification.
And that first one there, so if we require parking permits, then we gotta give them a permit. Is that, if we don't give them a permit, then they have a right to park without a permit? Is that basically what that means, that first bullet?
No, it would probably just apply that we don't have to, we can't require the general parking space if they are not able to get a parking permit for the street.
All right. Okay. He, Councilmember Rue?
My first question is in regard to design. Several cities, Chino is one of them, has five shelf, some are more, some are less, but Chino has five shelf-ready plans. So if I go in, I don't need to hire my own architect or anything else. I can just look at the plans, pick the one I like, and they're all ready to move forward with that. So it eliminates a lot of cost and a lot of effort on behalf of the applicant. Are we looking at doing something similar to that?
Yes, we are. We have, I think, three tentative proposals that we have been working on with our consultants. And so we are poised to have that become a reality hopefully in the near future. We were trying to time it with the general plan update, but we'll get it done, and we do have, and have been working on it.
And on page 10, the first paragraph, an ADU or junior ADU may not be rented, et cetera. Further, an ADU or J, junior ADU cannot be sold or otherwise conveyed separately. I understand there is a law that now allows the lot to, it's not an SB 9 unit, which are different. SB 9 and 10 are different animals. But that allows a person with an existing ADU to split the lot and have that unit sold separately.
If they, that's, let me, I'm gonna let Todd Leishman explain that.
That's my understanding. I-
Evening, Mayor. Mayor Potem and council. My name's Todd Leishman. I'm special counsel with Best, Bestin, Krieger. And if I understood your question correctly, it was-
The lot, and I don't have the bill number in front of me. I would have to go to my office and pull it. I didn't have time today. There was a bill that was passed, I believe, signed by the governor that allows the-
Yes.
ADU, if I have it on my property, I can go petition for a lot split, have that completely split away and conveyed and sold separately.
First of all, yes, I understand the, or I know the law that you're talking about. And the, the main thing you need to understand, or that the council ought to understand, is that it only created the possibility for a city to opt to do that. It can pass, the city can act by ordinance to allow that. If you choose not to, it will not be allowed. Most cities, in fact, I'm not aware of any, and I work with close to 80. I'm not aware of anyone that has chosen to allow separate conveyance, and it's through condominiums. You create a little condo, and then you can separately convey it, and you're not, it's not so much a lot split as just an air, an air subdivision to create that separate interest that's then conveyed. That's, that's an, an option that's available to you on the council.
I would hope we could revisit this in the future and include that. It is a difficult issue when it comes to, if there's a mortgage on the property, the primary property, and they choose to do this, there are some issues there, but most lenders can work that out. It does create some problems with the county or the jurisdiction as far as ownership issues. But again, you simply condoize the property, and it'll work. I think it would be a good thing, because a person may wish to sell the ADU to a grandchild or somebody else simply because that person can now start to build a little bit of wealth. We always have, you know, issues in California with this. But the more you can encourage somebody to build wealth, and most people in California built their wealth through owning their home, would be a good thing. So I hope we could revisit that in the future. And I'm wondering on the third paragraph, certain income recording requirements that are rented. Why are we requiring that?
Well, that requirement doesn't come from state law. That's a requirement that many cities choose to do because HCD has statutory authority to count ADUs toward your RENA.
Right.
If it wants to. And it has signaled that it will not accept an ADU for RENA at lower income levels unless there's evidence supporting that, that it's actually rented out at a lower income level. So cities that want that lower income unit credit are looking for ways to support that when it comes to their APR, their annual progress report. So they're seeking to get that information on the front end, maybe annually. And that's just an attempt to comply with RENA.
The reason I ask that is there was a bill that was working its way through the California Legislature probably 18 months ago, maybe not quite that long ago, that basically was going to ask every landlord to provide proof of income from their tenants, race, ethnicity, familial relationships, job status. It had probably 15 to 20 different requirements. That bill was defeated, thankfully, because I think that's invasion of privacy. And I guess my question with this is how far the city would go? Is it just reporting, "I work at the local fast food and I make $10,000 a year"?
It's not even that much information. We don't care where you work. We just want the landlord to say, well, as written, it would just ask the landlord to provide information about how much they do or plan to rent the unit. to provide information about how much they do or plan to rent the unit for.
Okay, I'm concerned about that because there were questions with that original bill.
Very different.
And it was very, very difficult to understand why anybody would want that. I would hope we don't go in that direction. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Lopez.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. In hearing all the presentation and the explanations and the questions from my colleagues, this just confirms to me this is yet another top-down, not bottom-up approach and a one-size-fits-all, one-policy-fits-all directive from the state that's being forced upon us, the cities. I'm not opposed to ADUs at all. I think they're a benefit, and they will help alleviate the housing situation that we find ourselves. And when I say ourselves, I mean the whole state and country in general. A couple months ago, maybe, maybe a month or two, probably two months, we adopted a resolution, or was it an ordinance, basically codifying, was it SB 9?
Yes.
And that now, is this what we're, we're changing already?
No, this is a different set of standards that apply only to ADUs. SB 9 is a different legislation altogether.
Okay, and what we adopted back then addressed house property splits, right?
That was one aspect of the SB 9 proposal. The other aspect was a two-unit development without the lot split.
A little frustrated with a lot of this. Let me go into my questions, so I have some questions marked. During your presentation, you stated the houses on, well, it was vacant lots at the time on Palo Verde. Did we require parking for those at that time?
We required parking for the main unit, which we could do under the code, and parking spaces for the other two units that were the JDU as well as the detached JDU.
And that was obviously before this law.
Yes.
So therefore, we could require it, right?
Well, it would have required a space for each of the units under the laws it is generally, unless they could qualify under one of those exceptions for not require, not allowing us to require it.
So when I came on the council, I, going through some of my, getting caught up with what was going on at the time, the issue of ADUs was just fresh and being brought up that, hey, this is coming down the pipe. We're going to have to look at it. We're going to have to adopt our, or rather, change our ordinances to make them conform to state law. And then I was told we could not require parking on any ADUs. And I just thought that that was ill-advised because we're going to have single-family dwellings that is going to, that are going to have additional individuals living in the dwelling units. Gone are the days of one family, one car. Therefore, people that move in, chances are, they have a car themselves now. So if you have three people living there, you have three vehicles. If you have four people, four vehicles likely, unless they're kids. But nonetheless, with the passage of time, there are going to be teenagers that drive and adults that drive. And it's going to impact our streets because then we're going to have a battle on the streets again. And a case in point that I brought up was the issue on Kingsley Street, where the south side is apartments, on the north side are homes, and they're fighting for parking. And then the homes on the north side are beginning to do ADUs, so they're adding to the parking problem. But I've never quite fully grasped how this could actually be manageable or even a solution to the situation. I think it only exacerbates it. So I'm trying to find the page. I do want to talk to you about garages, by the way. We, what page do you make those recommendations on parking? Was it nine?
Page eight.
In the ordinance or in the?
Page four.
Oh, I was on page, or notable changes two. Yeah. So if I may clarify, we've always required a off-street space for all ADUs since I've been here. The difference from the earlier days when we, when I was here before these laws came was that we required covered parking spaces for carport. Well, in this case, our city always required garages with closed doors, but we can do neither of those covered spaces. But we were always required to do a space on the site to accommodate the ADUs.
While you were talking, I'm trying to find the page about, John, you said page eight.
Page four of the presentation. Notable changes two.
So these are nonetheless suggestions, then? Is that what you're saying?
They're exceptions to the required one space per ADU. If you choose to invoke any of these and can, we can, and can be demonstrated that you meet these exception criteria, one of these exception criteria or more.
So if they're, if a property owner, resident of ours, is going to build an ADU, they want to get around the requirement to have a slab parking space available on the property? And if they can prove that there's a car-share vehicle located within one block from their location, they could be exempt from having that slab for parking?
That's the way I would understand this, yes, they would. And they could avail of those particular exceptions.
I, well, in that particular instance, I just don't see that as a common avenue or availability within the city at the moment.
And I can say that no one, we've done almost 90 ADUs in the last three years, has asked for any of these exceptions.
So most of these individuals that are currently requesting them are accommodating the footage to accommodate the slab.
They typically have driveway space in front of their garages if they're converting a garage, or they have a driveway that leads to a back area behind, on the property, that they can accommodate a space. So they, it's worked out so far, and they can do tandem parking arrangements. I grew up with tandem parking in LA, and it's a bit of a chore to move cars around, but it can be done.
Now, let's go page six of your presentation, the first square point. It addresses attached garage, but what about detached garages?
What about?
Well, it says that, to propose or existing single-family residents such as attached garages are considered part of the primary single-family residence. But in the case of some homes that have a detached garage, is the detached garage still considered part of the primary single-family residence?
No, the attached garage would be considered part of the primary residence, and that was important for making distinctions with respect to junior ADUs versus detached ADUs. Currently, as well as the one that's proposed for you, allows for the conversion of detached garages as well into a detached dwelling unit.
And the detached, sorry, sir. The detached garage is not considered part of the single-family residence?
It's not part of the primary residence, no.
Hold on, bear with me. Page seven requires the city to approve or deny an application for an ADU or junior ADU within 60 days of reviewing the application. Are we utilizing our, is that going to be done in-house with staff? Or are we still utilizing our consultant for approving plans?
Staff basically handles everything. We have, we can do, well, the planning department will review it in-house with the, with the submittal. And our building division, we can handle most of that. We will farm out some things that require structural review. We have a structural consultant, but that's it otherwise.
And they're pretty quick at getting back to us within that.
Yes, they are.
60-day timeframe? Now, is it our requirement on page nine to require landscaping? Or is that part of the state requirements?
It's our requirement so that we have a completed property. So when someone sort of disrupts things to, to put together an ADU or build one, then we just ask them to complete the project by completing their landscaping.
What justifies landscaping? Putting into pots in the ground, why, I mean?
No, not necessarily. It would be a combination of some hardscape and some living plant materials. And we're pretty flexible on what landscaping is because there's a lot of room for creativity and being able to say that's really landscaping and not just concrete or dirt.
I, I would say that that should be at the discretion of the property owner. I mean, it shouldn't be up to us.
We're not requiring a specific style of anything. We're just saying just complete the project with landscaping. So they can choose their plant materials and their design preferences for their whatever remains. And usually, we're only concerned about the front. So the front of the property or a street side looks completed. The backyard's a little more, even more, we have more latitude even in the backyard.
But what if it's in the backyard and there, the ADU is to be constructed adjacent to an alleyway? I mean, where there is no public views, there really is no need to have landscaping.
Well, they'd be four foot, required to be four foot from the rear property line. So there's not a lot to do landscaping anyway. But it has to be still cleaned and maintained, and most people want to do that anyway.
I wish we didn't have that requirement on there. I think we're just adding to the cost and infringing on their square footage for them to maximize their development. I, I do have a, thank you for, and I know this was in the other ordinance that we adopted, basically getting rid of short-term rentals. I don't know if you guys just heard what happened in Alhambra, but a short-term rental is a, we're cleaning it out, found 230-some pounds of heroin or marijuana, heroin or coke hidden in the short-term rental. So anyhow, I think that just adds to problems. So I'm thankful for that, so we can avoid that in the city. We're not going to do no, what do they call it? That application that they use. You rent a room, you use that app. Airbnb, there you go, thank you. So none of that would be happening here. My colleague touched on it. I do have a problem with us asking for the rent statistics or what property owners are charging rent in their ADUs or JDUs. I understand that that might be another part of the, of the strategy to somehow meet arena numbers. But I just don't think that that's something that we should be delving into. I don't think that's our role. We're already, in my opinion, well, the state is, regulating the hell out of them with respect to the ADUs. And then now we're going to require for them to show their rent. We're going to require them to put landscaping if it's in a backyard ADU that's never going to be seen by the public. So I just, I'm uneasy with that, and I don't really care if other cities are doing it. Doesn't mean we should be following suit, but I'm a little frustrated by it. I really am. I thought we had put this to bed with the other ordinances we adopted. I do kind of wish that we could require, specifically require parking, even if it is a covered spot on all of these, just to alleviate the tension amongst residents on our streets because it does happen and they do fight for parking. Those that have permits, obviously, are going to fight with those on another section of the street that may not have permits. I just, I just can see this being problematic. But you guys had me on the last votes on these ordinances, and it seemed pretty cut and dry. Somehow, though, I just, not fully being able to wrap my head around this. So I'm a little bit on the fence, but the parking situation bugs me. And that landscaping stipulation and the rent stipulation bugs me, but that's just me.
Well, if I may, just on the collection of the rent data. So the objective of the state is that the ADUs and the junior ADUs are designed and intended to produce affordable housing in the state. That's the overall objective of the state. And the collection of that data allows for the state to determine whether or not this, in fact, is working. And if it's not working, then perhaps there will be relief for cities throughout the state as regards our requirements in relation to ADUs and junior ADUs. So I think that the collection of that data is valuable in that regard, not only from the perspective of the state and from the cities, but the overall determination as to where this process ultimately goes.
Okay, well, that's great, and I'm okay with everything that's in the proposed ordinance. And so we have a motion for approval?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion for the item as presented this evening.
Okay, that includes ordinance read by number title only and furthering be waived and this be a first reading. Okay, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Second by Council, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem Johnson, and we'll go ahead and do electronic vote.
Mr. Mayor, real quickly.
Yes.
I, let me explain my vote. I, I'm going to abstain on this round. I'm not going to vote no on it because I think there's perhaps some additional explanation and information I could be missing or need some explanation on to further educate me, and I can come to better terms on this. So I don't want to vote no in ignorance. So I'm going to lay off. I know it's going to come around a second time. And perhaps if I'm at ease, I will vote for final passage. But at this moment, I will lay off on the vote.
Okay, well, just to remind all my council colleagues, you do have an opportunity to contact staff prior to the meeting and ask them questions regarding any items on the agenda. I think that's important to do if you have some real question, a lot of questions. And I will say that, you know, this is mandated on us by the state of California. It's not something that we're advocating on the council colleague. There is some little wiggle room here we have, which, which staff is taking, trying to take full advantage of that. And the other thing here is the, is the housing element plan to, because that is, there's a bill in Sacramento now. If we don't have an approved housing element plan, they're going to fine us. That's circulating right now, and there's some other bills there too. But the reality is, we all know, housing is, is, the shortage of housing is going to, is going to further increase. The cost of housing continues to go up. And we can argue all day about why that's, why that's happening. But then Sacramento is seeing that, and they think they have all the magic answers to this issue. And then we're just supposed to follow them. So trying to go down to Sacramento and lobby them and trying to tell them, you know, what you're thinking about, we don't think it's going to work, or it's not fair, or there's a better way to do it. They're not, mostly not interested in listening to us. They're more interested in listening to other special interest groups, in my opinion. So if you want to abstain, that's fine. If you need more time, I encourage you to get into contact or staff or the city manager with questions. Make sure, make sure you fully understand the purpose of this and the reason why this is in front of us because, you know, new legislation on ADUs and JDUs was presented, approved because there are some things that they thought cities were, were getting away with, or what's the other word? They, they found some exceptions. There's another word, illegal word you use. So they're trying to fix that and give us less, less latitude and local, local control. But with that, we'll go ahead and vote.
Mr. Mayor, before you vote. Special counsel just informed me that the legislature may be renumbering some of the statutory references.
Yeah.
So if we could include in the motion that the permission for staff to update any statutory references, there would be no substantive changes. Just if the lettering or the numbers change, that we can clean that up.
Okay, do the maker in the second?
I will add that, that's fine, the statutory changes.
And the second is okay with that, too? Okay, that's part of the motion then, and we'll go and vote. All right, it's adopted three to one with one abstention. We will now go down to the consent calendar. I'll ask Mayor Protem Johnson or City Attorney, they have anything?
Could I go ahead and read?
Oh, yeah, go ahead, sorry.
Okay. Ordinance number 24-1006, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Montclair adopting zoning code amendment number 2024-21 to repeal and replace chapter 11.23 of the Montclair municipal code relating to accessory dwelling units, ADUs and junior accessory dwelling units, JDUs in the city of Montclair and determining the ordinance to be exempt from SEQA.
Okay. All right, I appreciate that. We will now go down to the consent calendar. And under the consent calendar, any items you wish to, to remove?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remove C1, C like Charles one.
All right, C1. Okay, City Attorney, was there an item, a city clerk that required a removal, Andrea?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we would like to ask the council to continue D1 to the next meeting.
All right, D1 will be continued, so we'll continue that one, okay. All right, we got that out of the way, so we will now go to my right side. Anybody on my right?
No, not this evening.
No, sir.
All right, so C1, Mayor Protem Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a couple of questions about the advocate. I'm interested to know, like, do they go out with the police department? How often do they go out with the police department? Do they go out alone? How many cases have they done since the... How many cases has the advocate worked on since they've been here? And can people reach the advocate just on their own, or do they have to come to the police department? Those are my questions.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, City Council, City Staff. So the advocate is assigned to us through the District Attorney's Office. Just a little background on how we have the position. It fiscally does not impact the city at all. Our agreement with the District Attorney's Office is that we provide a working space for the advocate. So that's a great benefit for us. She does not respond to any calls in progress or in the field. She's more of a post-incident advocate for members of our community who are victimized. Last year, she assisted approximately 40 different victims. She also has direct contact with the California Compensation Board, which is a state-funded program for victims who have qualifying crimes, more of your serious types of crimes in nature. And those services can range from relocation, food, mental health, medical, dental, those types of things. And so what she does is she obtains the police reports that are of those qualifying crimes. And generally, the contact is directly from her to the victim. But there also have been times where we have been on serious calls where we have to relocate victims or even children, where we involve her directly at that point.
Excellent. Thank you. Oh, and one last question. Then, once she talks to the victims, then how will they know, when she's done with her conversations, how will they know where to go? Like, what if they'd need to go to the house or roof or whatever it is?
Right.
How will they know?
So she... What she does is every victim is entitled to certain rights in California under Marcy's law. She makes sure that those victims are afforded those rights, not only from initiating the process when she makes her initial contact, but throughout the duration of the criminal case. Because some of these criminal cases could take many months, if not years. And so she stays in contact with the victims regularly to make sure that all their rights and all their resources are being afforded to our victims. So that's... It's just not one initiated call contact. It's a continuous effort on her part with these victims.
Excellent. It sounds like we're very fortunate to have her.
She's a wonderful resource for our community.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your responses.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Can I get a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move adoption of the consent calendar as presented.
With exception of item D1, of course. Well, item D1 will be continued. And so we will go ahead and vote. Everybody's voted? Okay. Okay. Four zero. And again, item D1 is not part of the motion. Communications, let's start with the City Attorney.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two items this evening, as indicated in the agenda, both to ask the council to meet in closed session, one regarding potential litigation, and the other regarding labor negotiations involving the groups listed with designated labor negotiator, Mr. Starr. Other than that, I have nothing else this evening.
Okay. Thank you. City Manager.
Well, Mr. Mayor, you'll hear a lot from me in closed session.
Okay. Regarding myself, again, council, just remember, we have two budget meetings coming up. June 20th is the workshop. I believe that's a Thursday. And then we have a special city council meeting on the 26th for the adoption of the budget. You know, for the month of June, I just want to recognize some significant dates or activities that... June will be Cancer Survivors Month. June 6th, obviously mentioned earlier, is D-Day. June 12th is the Philippines Independence Day. June 14th is Flag Day. I know in a couple Sundays, it will be Father's Day in June, so happy Father's Day if I don't see all the Fathers. June 19th, of course, is Juneteenth Day. And then, of course, during the month of June, we have two significant heritages. So one is the LGBT+, which is the Pride Month. And then finally, we have Caribbean American Heritage Month. So you want to just recognize all our Montclair residents who are, will be celebrating these days during the month of June. In regards to a couple of events, I want to say I appreciate all the hard work on staff for Memorial Day and also for the jamboree event that took place last month. I... Memorial Day, obviously, is always a special day, and kind of felt there was a little more people there. And then, of course, jamboree is, I hear a lot of great things, as usual, for the jamboree day, and it's a fun day. And I appreciate, again, all the hard work. And finally, a couple of weeks ago, myself and some of the staff members attended the city-county annual conference in La Groa, where we discussed several issues at that conference, including homelessness, cybercrime. I can't remember the other issues we spoke of, but those were at least two of them. All right. So with that, I think I'll start with Mayor Protem Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a couple of items. Well, so I agree with you about Memorial Day. The staff did an outstanding job, as usual. The human services staff is wonderful. And I was... The second issue is I was very happy to see so many police officers at our Police Officer Recognition at the Canyon, and I heard lots of positive things. So we'll be thinking about doing that again next year. And then I want to talk about the jamboree. And I really want to thank the... It was so organized, as always. The human services staff is always fantastic. But so thank you to the human services staff, to the public work staff. But I specifically want to point out the sound of the unadulterated joy of the children who were in the splash pad. There was so much glee and giggling, and they were playing tag amongst each other, and they had some special game. It was fascinating to watch. My grandchildren were in there, too. So a special thank you to Jesus and Sergio and anyone else who worked on the splash pad. That is a great... That is a great resource for our residents, who, those of whom who don't have a pool in the backyard. They live in small apartments, and they don't have... They don't have air conditioning, and they can't afford to go to raging waters, and that splash pad is where they find relief. So I am eternally grateful, as are the children and the citizens of this community, that that splash pad is up and going, and the children... Just go stand next to it one time when the children are in there, and you'll see exactly what I'm talking about. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my comments.
And I just want to recognize yourself, too. I know you're a volunteer at the Chamber of Commerce, but you also played a part in the jamboree event, helping putting that together, so on your, with your other hat. So with that, Councilmember Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few items. I also attended the Chamber of Commerce's event honoring our fine police officers and the awards, the special designated awards given to several of them. I do want to congratulate, and I hope I get their ranks correctly, Officer Santoro, Detective Mondralla, is it Detective? Officer Mondralla. He'd love me for giving him the promotion, I guess. Officer Vera and Sergeant Aguilar. And Officer of the Year was who? I'm forgetting. Detective Herrera, yes. So to those individuals, congratulations on your well-deserved recognition, and thank you for your service to this community. We are a small but mighty department. I've always said we're a small and mighty city, and we're the little city that could here on the west end of San Bernardino County. But it was a great, small cozy event there at the Canyon. I wasn't expecting to have some live entertainment, which was pretty cool. So that was great to have. Perhaps we should have that at more of the events, but that was cool. So kudos to you at the chamber and staff and PD, but convey my thanks to them. Little League has come to an end for this season. They just had their closing ceremonies this past Friday, and they had their booths and their games, and the DJ there at the Saratoga Park. I have not coached for the past couple of years since my little one, my nephew, has moved out of state. So, but I still, and my family, we still support the Little League, and we sponsored a team this year. So it was pretty neat to provide a pizza lunch meals to one of the teams who have kids that I've coached up the, throughout the years. Other coaches have now taken, coached them now, of course, and have taken those teams. But it was good to see some familiar faces. But it just brings some joy to acknowledge their accomplishments, as little as they are, and thank the parents for giving the commitment day in and day out to bring them to practice, bring them to the games and support them. So to all of the Montclair Little League and Golden Girls softball, parents, board, and staff, and all the volunteers, thank you for your commitment, giving back and investing into these kids, because these kids will not forget it, especially five, 10, 15 years down the road. They will see you at a grocery store and say, Coach so-and-so, how you doing? Remember me? I coached, I played ball for you. It's a heartwarming feeling. I still get that to this day. I also want to announce, Montclair High School is having a baseball camp, June 11th and 12th. For, I believe, the ages, don't get me... I want to say 11 to 13. I could be wrong. But June 11th and 12th at Montclair High School, 5:00 PM to 7:30. Registration is just $50. That's just $25 a day. That just basically pays for volunteer, not even their time, but some of just the equipment and probably use of the fields. If anyone is interested, please email the following. It's Coach Castro. His email is Christopher, traditional spelling, christopher.castro@cjushd.net. And then just one item I need to bring to City Manager and council's attention. I thought the family was expected to be here to speak during public comment, but I did say that if they did not, I would bring their concern. I emailed the City Manager and the Mayor shortly before this meeting, but we do have a concern from a family resident of ours.
Their family did send an email to us last Thursday, and I forwarded that email where the City Manager, Starr, addressed to review the key, the issue. So, yeah, I saw your email.
Okay. And I did include, did include some pictures of the building in question. But if staff could look in that and get back to the family and provide a status, it'd be appreciated, because apparently they just feel a little bit exacerbated and at wits' end, and I want to put them at ease. Perception's reality to the residents, and putting them at ease would go a long way. So thank you. Other than that, Mr. Mayor, I believe I am done.
Okay. Councilman Rue.
Yes. I did attend the International Shopping Center Conference, which was May 19th to 21st in Las Vegas. I was housed at the Embassy Suites next to the Convention Center. It's a non-gaming hotel. I don't gamble, so that's fine with me. Arrived Sunday afternoon on Frontier Airlines, and then Monday morning, went to the Montclair booth. There were a lot of people I know, not just going by the booth, but Lewis Holmes was there, Reliable Properties, Lennar, some of the others I've known. So it was good to see all that. Hopefully, we will have some, you know, business out of that we have in the past. I see no reason why we wouldn't this time. One of the big items was right across the aisle from us. It was Toriko. It's a company of Taiwan, but it's of Japanese origin. And they do indoor batting cages, and then they do entertainment centers with real bowling, virtual bowling, virtual baseball, things of that sort. And they have a patent to use the Hello Kitty Sanrio, and they use that with a lot of the little kids. It was very cute. Even adults were there. They were just really enthralled with the concept. So, you know, we'll see. I know they're looking at many cities. Montclair may be one of them, but it was really an interesting concept for that. I was, excuse me, unable to attend the police recognition. I did call the chief and explain why I had a last-minute work issue that I had to deal with, and I have to take care of my professional life first. I'm a full-time working council member. The Memorial Day was very well done. It's always good to see the turnout there and the numbers of people who really want to remember on Memorial Day. The, excuse me, the event at the park on Saturday was really... It was wonderful, and so many children enjoyed the petting zoo, especially the llama. It was... I don't think it was a full-grown llama, but it may not have been a baby. I don't know much about llamas, but all the children loved it. They had a donkey, they had rides, and that was wonderful. You know, many of our young people don't get to see anything other than a dog or a cat, so having some exotic animals there teaches them a little bit about the world and what's going on, and that was very good to see. We mentioned D-Day on the, at the day in the park. Congressmember Norma Torres told me that she was selected as one of the members of the U.S. delegation to go to Normandy and represent our country. It was 80 years ago, this June 6th, that the United States, along with the United Kingdom and their Commonwealth allies, as well as Canada and the Free French, launched the largest amphibious invasion of the mainland in history. 156,000 troops participated that day. 4,400 died. 9,000 were wounded or missing. I had two uncles at Normandy. I'm very thankful they survived. Their stories were amazing. That day, the blood in the ocean was every race, creed, and color. Didn't matter your financial status, your station in life, where you came from or who you were. You were united. You vanquished the evil that Nazi Germany was perpetrating on the world. These young men sacrificed everything, and those who lived did not come back unscarred. Those memories stayed with them. If any of you have ever been to the D-Day Museum in New Orleans, I wouldn't... You know what I'm talking about. If you haven't, if you have the opportunity, then please go. They have recorded stories of those who survived, the stories of those who witnessed. All of these men, and they were men in that era, made a sacrifice for people they did not even know, for people who spoke languages they did not understand. And they did this because they understood that democracy is still the best form of government. So I'm pleased that we have somebody from our area, our congress member, and, you know, she knows our region so well, that she will be there to help honor all those who were at Normandy. And this will most likely be the very last D-Day ceremony, whether there's, were there any living survivors of Normandy. Most of them are about 98 to 100. I think one gentleman is 105, and he's making his way there. So let's remember that, and let's take a moment on the 6th of June and just, however you choose to respect and honor them, take it, take a moment and do that, because what they did was a tremendous sacrifice. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We have minutes, many minutes in the agenda, and we'll now go into closed session.